Okay, welcome to those that have joined us from home this evening as well as those that have joined us here in council chambers. It's a work session of the Picuson City Council and tonight we're pleased and actually very warm welcome to Dr. Dever and some of his staff from Thomas Nelson Community College, where they've celebrated 50 years. We all, most of us attended that celebration which was well done, but more so Thomas Nelson is a part of our community as it is the communities that surround us. So we're looking forward, Dr. Dever, to hearing from you and I'm just gonna let council know, you know, if they've got questions along the way, to bring them on, okay?
By all means.
Sir, the podium's there.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much and thanks to all the council members for your strong support for Thomas Nelson, particularly at this time of our 50th anniversary. We really appreciated your strong turnout at our recent gala event. It was really a pleasure to have you with us as well as representatives from all the localities that the colleges serve. I'm pleased that this evening that your representative to, that you appoint to our college board, Mr. Alan Melton, has, I think, been the person who's made this arrangement possible. So Alan is a very, very active and supportive member of the college and we appreciate your appointment of him. With me this evening are two members who serve with me at the administration at the college, Mr. Charles Nuremberger, our Vice President for Finance Administration. Mr. Nuremberger in particular works with our localities, with our city manager and others to make sure that the colleges' relationships with our cities and counties is strong. And then Ms. Cindy Callaway, Cynthia Callaway, our Vice President for Institutional Advancement. And Cindy has responsibility for keeping us up all issues in terms of promoting and marketing the institution, public communication, legislative relations and the like. So I'm pleased to have both of them here tonight. And Cindy, of course, by the way, is a resident of the city, a proud resident of the city of Picuson. Well, the, as we've talked about, we're very, very proud this year to be celebrating the 50th anniversary of the college. This is an iconic picture that we have occurred in December 1967 when the cornerstone was set there at Hastings Hall as the construction was going up for the Hampton campus. The gentleman to the left there is Dana Hamel, the founding chancellor of the Virginia Community College System. And those of you who are at the gala remember that he had joined us that evening, 95 years old at this particular point. What a remarkable job he did back in the 60s, working with Governor Albertus Harrison and Governors Mills Godwin in setting up the 23 community colleges, of course, of which Thomas Nelson was one. The gentleman in the middle is Eugene Sidner. He was a state senator and at that particular time, the Chair of the State Board for Community Colleges. And the gentleman on the right is Melvin Butler. Melvin Butler was the first Chair of the Thomas Nelson Community College Board. He served on the board for nine years. He was an administrator at NASA Langley Research Center. He goes back to the 40s and 50s and 60s during that period. He was the Personnel Director for NASA Langley during World War II. And those of you who are familiar with the book Hidden Figures about the computation, the ladies who were doing the computations before computers at NASA Langley. Melvin Butler is credited with breaking through those barriers of gender and race to bring employees to NASA Langley because they were badly needed at the time. He later went on to serve as the, on the city council for Hampton and has served, I think, twice as Vice Mayor for that. So those were, that's the founding of our institution. Our classes, those buildings went up in less than a year and the first classes at the college started in September of 2000, of 1968. Over 1,200 students began at the college that year. As you well know, the mission of the college is to serve the Virginia Peninsula, the four cities and the two counties. We have the two campuses, of course, the one at Hampton that began operation in 1968. And we always aspire to serve, better serve the upper peninsula. And we have the campus there, the historic Triangle Campus in Lightfoot outside of Williamsburg, and that building opened in 2009 and served there. Serves that region, Upper York County, James City County, and the city of Williamsburg in particular. We also have various centers located around the peninsula as well. In the lower peninsula, we have, of course, the Peninsula Workforce Development Center that is located on our campus. And we have the Center for Building and Construction Trades that's located at Goodwill in Hampton, the old Target Store there, where we do training in HVAC, electricity, facilities maintenance and plumbing, accelerated programs. I'll talk about some of those a little bit later on. In the southeast community of Newport News on Marshall Avenue, next to Heritage High School, we have the Southeast Tower Education Center. And then up in Williamsburg, in the Newtown area, we have the Thomas Nelson Workforce Center at Williamsburg as well. So we are well located throughout the peninsula. Our mission, the way I, it's not the formal statement, but the way I put it when I'm out talking about the college, we're here, we're here for the residents of the Virginia Peninsula, all ages, all circumstances. We're here to serve their needs. We're here to provide them with affordable and accessible opportunities for high-quality collegiate education and workforce training. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do day in and day out for the last 50 years at Thomas Nelson. As a result of that, our students advance themselves individually, personally and professionally. And by advancing themselves individually, then our communities collectively are much stronger as a result of it. And we feel like it results in economic prosperity and the social well-being of the larger community as a result of our presence. We emphasize that Thomas Nelson is a value proposition. And, you know, you don't have value if it's just low cost. And you don't have value if you just have quality. You've got to put the two of those together if it's truly gonna be a value proposition. So on the quality side, we've got an award-winning faculty and staff devoted to service and what we're doing. This past year, one of our faculty members was recognized as one of the outstanding faculty members in Virginia. That's the, there are 12 of those selected each year from all, across all of higher education, public and private. And we're very pleased that Jennifer Martin, Professor of Biology, was that award, had received that award. Two of our faculty members have received the Chancellor's Award for Teaching Excellence. There's only one of those chosen each year. Again, outstanding, outstanding faculty, small classes. Our average class size is 20. That means we can give a lot of personal attention to our students. We don't have those three and 500-word, you know, seat lecture halls, you know how those, those go. Of course, we're accredited by the Southern Association of Colleges and School Commission on Colleges, the same accreditation that the College of William &amp; Mary has, that Old Dominion has, that Virginia Commonwealth University has, you know. We are accredited as an institution of higher education. We've been recognized for, particularly for our work in information technology, digital education, the resources that we have at the institution. In terms of cost, a credit hour at Thomas Nelson this fall for an in-state student, $162.20 for a credit hour. And what that means is you can get a three-credit course for just a little bit over $480. And you can get, over the course of an academic year, 30 credits. One half and a associate degree, one quarter of a baccalaureate degree for just over $4,800. Take that to the marketplace and do a little comparative shopping and I think you'll see, again, we wish it were not quite as high as it is, but we feel like comparatively it's truly remarkable that we're able to offer our programs at that rate. 50% of our students, and I'll talk about our student body in just a minute, do receive financial aid. In terms of the overall economic impact that we have, we did a, we had MC come in, major national firm, research firm, on economics to do an economic impact study for several years back. And they were working with the year 2014, 2015, that was the most recent date that they had at the time. Our total impact, economic impact on the Virginia Peninsula, $330 million. And you know where most of that comes from? It's from our alumni who remain on the peninsula and whose value to themselves and to their employers is enhanced by their education. And it's not, and all that they factored in was the value added as a result of the education, what they contributed to the Virginia economy. So the great majority of that comes from our alumni. 75% stay here. Again, don't want to put down any of our brethren. They do wonderful work, but if you look at our universities, most of the students who come here, come there, come from someplace else and they're gonna go someplace else. Most of the students coming to Thomas Nelson come from our community, are gonna remain in our community. It's one of the things that we feel like significantly differentiates us from other institutions of higher education. In terms of return on investment, this is the annual return. For what a student puts in, the return is over 15%. For taxpayers, in terms of what taxpayers put in, the return is over 20%. And then there's huge savings, it's hard to calculate what all this is, but social savings that come from the improved health, the reduced crime, the low unemployment as a result of people receiving education, a lot of overall social benefits for us. So we, of course, we have a detailed study on that and be glad to provide anyone with a copy of that who might be interested. But again, we feel like Thomas Nelson is truly a value proposition for the Virginia Peninsula. Our student body, the past year, we served over 12,000 students in our academic programs. In addition to that, we served over 4,700 students in our non-credit workforce programs or services that we offer our students. And 66% of those students were what we call underrepresented. They were either first generation, minority students, or low income. And low income, we define as students who are eligible for Pell Grants. And so, again, we're serving, we served the whole, you know, everyone's got a place at the table, we like to say, at Thomas Nelson. But we particularly wanted to be there for those who otherwise could not take advantage of the opportunities for higher education. And I think that statistic shows that. We're very proud that 28% of our students have a military affiliation, active duty, veteran, or spouse or dependent. And also another, I think particularly interesting statistic is that 36% of our students are age 25 or older, older students who come to us. I always like to say as a faculty member, when I was an English faculty member at Thomas Nelson from 1975 to 1995, I taught those students. I had them in my classes, the older students, as well as the, you know, traditional age students, 18 to 24. And I loved it because the older students with life experiences added so much to the classroom experience. And you'd get the young people with their perspectives, the older students with their perspectives, and you'd have the exchange between them, very, very powerful learning environment. Older students, I know I have to tell you, when they come back, they know why they're there, they've got clear goals, they expect a lot of themselves, they expect a lot of their classmates, and let me tell you, they expect a lot of the professor, too, you know. You've got, you do, you have to do on your toes all the time with those. For Picuson, we did some statistics over the last three years. This is the number of total enrolled students. This past year, 255 students from the city of Picuson were enrolled at Thomas Nelson. And in terms of recent high school graduates, we had 23. You'll note the decline there. And we have been experiencing enrollment decline over the past four, five, six years at Thomas Nelson, as have all of Virginia's community colleges. We are very market-sensitive. When the economy went south in 2007, 2008 with the Great Recession, over the next four years, Thomas Nelson grew 30% in terms of it. People needed us at that time. We were there to respond to them. When the economy improved, as it has over the past five or six years, guess what? The enrollment has gone down about that same amount. We're about where we were when we started, back at that particular time there. And so you will see somewhat the decline in the, in those numbers there, but that is reflective of the overall situation that we have. We have particularly seen fewer adult students. When I got here, 45% of our students were 25 years of age or older. It's now down to 36. And again, I think that's a reflection of the economy that we have right now, the low unemployment rate that we have for that. I'd also point out, we've done a little study in terms of the total population of Picuson and all of our cities in relationship to each other in terms of the Virginia Peninsula. You know, the overall, I call it half a millions, about 490,000 is the total population for the four cities and two counties. And Picuson, when we do those numbers, comes out at 2.5, but in terms of our enrollment, you come out at 2.9. So, you know, we are definitely serving you here at the, at the city, the residents of Picuson. In terms of what we are doing and programming, we're comprehensive. I break it into three, there are three types. Half of our students are coming to us to get the first two years of baccalaureate education and basically a two-plus-two program. And we're very proud of those students who move on to our universities. The great majority right now are going to Old Dominion, about 250 a year, about 100 to Virginia Commonwealth University, around 60 to Christopher Newport University, 40 or 50 to Norfolk State. And we're sending 30 a year to the College of William &amp; Mary, very, very pleased to have those. And of course, it's mattering to, across to other institutions as well that we have. And the track record of those students, what they do, very, very successful. Career and technical programs are those academic programs, either an applied degree or certificate program, that are designed to get people immediately into employment and to work. And workforce training is short-term, accelerated, often customized, doesn't have all the requirements that accreditation has for some of the academic programs that we can serve particular needs there. Give you some examples of each one of those coming up. In our transfer area, these are the majors that we have. These majors in these areas that we offer will match up with about 95% of the majors that a student would be pursuing at a baccalaureate institution. And we work very, very hard to get them in the right program. And once we know what university they're aiming for and what major they're aiming for, we have a strong academic advising program to make sure that they are getting the right credits that they need, not only to get the general education that they need, but all the pre-major requirements that they need as they move on to the university. In our career and technical programs, healthcare is one, of course, that stands out, our dental hygiene program, our emergency medical services program. We have the BMT Basic and the paramedics, that, of course, are very, very important for our communities. We combine that with fire science technology, as you know, those two often, those two go closely together. And our nursing program, we admit some 60 students at Hampton every fall into nursing and some 30 students every spring at the historic Triangle into our nursing program. Those students, when they complete their associate degree, are registered nurses at that point, so they're RNs. Many of them do go on for our BSN, a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, but they are registered nurses from the, with a associate degree. Number of areas in business professional, we've been giving a particular attention to cybersecurity. That's an important one, I'll talk a little bit about that later on. But accounting, business administration, management, paralegal studies, a whole range of IT courses. We've always been strong in the graphic arts and photography and graphic and media design at the institution. And in the mechanical and industrial technology, we're making major advances in our Advanced Integrated Manufacturing Initiative. I'll talk a little bit more about that coming up. We also have our automotive technology program there as well. That's a very strong program. In non-credit workforce training, these are courses that, these are programs that are oftentimes six to eight weeks, rapid, are designed to get people immediately into an employment. We have opportunities there in construction and building trades, healthcare, IT, manufacturing, transportation, that's commercial truck driving, and a very, very strong welding program at the institution. And of course, we work in partnership with companies to respond to their particular needs. This is an editorial that appeared in the Daily Press, when was it? Back in 2015, it was A Matter of Commitment. But it really caught my eye when it came out. And this was the section that, there that, where it said, "The work environment at Hampton Roads is a good example. Across the region, there exists a tremendous demand for skilled employees with technological know-how. Some of our most prominent manufacturers have good-paying jobs available for qualified workers, yet they struggle to find suitable candidates. The trouble is that we lack a workforce capable of satiating that demand. That's because we failed to develop the education infrastructure needed to train our young people to move into the marketplace and earn the competitive salaries available there." I've taken that as our challenge at Thomas Nelson. Working with our K Trail partners, working with other community colleges in the region, working with our workforce investment boards, the Greater, Buddy, the Greater Peninsula Workforce Board that you and I serve on together, working with our university partners and working, of course, mainly with the employer community, bringing all those together in coalition. Our job is to make sure we take care of this and make this happen. And I see Thomas Nelson playing a huge, a major role in that effort. In terms of major initiatives, our Advanced Integrated Manufacturing, our AIM initiative is something that our employer community has told us is critical for their success. They tell us that we need multi-skilled technicians and technologists who can perform not just one thing, but a variety of functions. In today's environment, you are not just a specialist, it's a total systems approach that you need to take. And where we particularly, and this is, where we particularly learned about this is our relationships with NASA Langley over the past, it's been a good, I'd say, over the past 50 years, probably 47 of those, we've had a strong working relationship with NASA Langley. We produced over 500, it's probably approaching now 600 of their technicians and technologists there. And they don't, they don't just have one job, they've got to know many, many, many different things. It's the same thing that we hear from employers like Newport New Shipbuilding, it's the same thing we hear from Cannon of Virginia, from Continental, from Levehaire, from all the major employers. It is, in today's environment, where things are digitally controlled and highly automated, we haven't eliminated people. Machines are doing a lot of it, but someone has to master those total processes. That's the people that we seek to do and that's what we mean by advanced integrated manufacturing. We have a goal, we're working on a number of programs in that regard, and one that in particular that we're proud of is our efforts in mechatronics, a lab that we've set up at New Horizons Regional Education Center and working with them. But we also have a goal of a major facility that we would like to have, that would bring those programs together and would be, would really say to our young people, these are great careers, this is challenging work, it's work that has a lot of dignity to it, a lot of, a lot of career possibilities. The pay is good, the opportunities are good, you've got to have a first-class facility to do that. I'm very pleased that this facility is in the capital outlay plan for the Virginia General Assembly. For the last two years, when they put their capital outlay plan together, under the Virginia Community College System, this is number four priority, number four. And so we think we've got a good chance of realizing this and we think that this could be a real game changer for the community. Another major area that we've given a lot of attention to is cybersecurity. And I think you're aware that we've been recognized as a center of academic excellence in two-year cyber defense. And that's a major designation that is given by the Department of Homeland Security and the National Security Agency. We've worked hard to achieve that. We are one of five community colleges in our system that have that designation. And of course, that's a, that's a growing and important program. In the future, we want to work on advancing all of our programs, whether they are transfer programs, our career and technical programs, or our workforce programs. We want to provide all our students with a comprehensive range of services and we're giving a lot of attention, particularly to strong academic advising, good onboarding, good advice all the way through. It's not just enough to sign them up. They seek and they say, what should I do next? I'm having difficulty here, how do I do that? We've made the investment in that. We serve traditionally underrepresented populations, we work with foster youth, we work with, we give a lot of attention to our minority students, we give a lot of attention to students with disabilities and others. We work with them specially. And we're working strong to have a strong, vibrant campus life. Our traditional students in particular are saying, we want morning classes, we want opportunities, we want athletics, we want, we want opportunities to come together around common interest. We say, we want to prepare you to be a good citizen, we want to start you to learn about service, opportunities that you can to give back, you want to be a leader, you want to contribute when you move on. So we're giving attention to that. And finally, we work very, very closely with our regional school systems. We have a good working relationship with Picuson Public Schools, Jennifer Parrish is an eye and at various levels, we've worked together. I'm pleased that we'll be starting a dual enrollment class in English, 111, this spring with Picuson Public Schools. We would have done more in that regard, but the faculty, the teachers have to have the same collegiate credentials as they do at the college. And if the teachers don't have that, we can't offer the dual enrollment. But we've got the right person to make that happen this spring. We work, of course, with our localities, with our employers, economic and workforce agencies. We're all about the prosperity of the region and we seek the resources for making everything at the institution truly excellent, to really support our students with scholarships and enhance educational experiences and in engaging an engaging and state-of-the-art learning environment. There's a master plan for our Hampton campus. I'm very pleased to tell you that we do have the detailed planning money to replace those original buildings. Diggs, Moore, and Harrison Hall that went up fifty years ago, they've done great work, but they're worn out, I'll tell you. And the HVAC systems, the plumbing, the technology, the amenities, they're not what they want. And so, right next to it, and let's see, I can actually do this, right there is going to be a three-story replacement building that we're building right next to, between what's now Moore Hall and Hastings Hall right there at the front of the campus. We're going to give people really something to look at when they go by and to see that three-story building there. We're in the detailed planning stages with RRMM Architects out of Chesapeake. And, and in the early spring, they go into, after the planning stage, to the detailed, to the detailed design work. We go through all the approval processes that we need to go through. And Mr. Nurnberger tells me, spade in the ground, twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty for this. We can't wait. And then, when that happens, right here is the circle of flags at the front of the campus. This is where Harrison Hall is, back here is Diggs and Moore. Those buildings go down and we'll put up a new three-story Student Services and Student Center building that will be right there at the front of the campus, consolidate that. So we're excited about remaking, remaking this, the Hampton campus. We're, we are going to be building up a new sign. We've got, we've had the approval for this for about three years, except for the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT. And after many, many legal wrangles, we finally got it. And Mr. Nurnberger, January?
Yes.
January, that thing, that sign will be going. So when you pass by, you're going to know you passed by Thomas Nelson. And of course, it's going to be, it's going to be a digital sign, and there'll be information there on both sides about events that are going on. And finally, this is our historic Triangle Campus, the master plan here. Here is the building that we now have, one hundred and twenty thousand square feet in the neo-Colonial, neo-Georgian style, appropriate for that community. And long-term, we want to build a, again, appropriate for the community, a quad up there. But we, we'll have to wait for the enrollment to continue to grow there, but that's the ultimate design that we have there. So that is Thomas Nelson, fifty years of what we'd be, what we're doing. It is, it is a pleasure to be able to share this with you. And I would welcome any questions or comments that you might have.
In terms of time, we're, we're running a little short, but I will tell you this. I can't imagine the peninsula community without Thomas Nelson. It's, it's, I've, I've taken classes there. How many, how many others have taken classes there on this council? Nobody? Yeah, okay. Or, but what I would tell you is that it's hard to imagine, it's, it's something that we take for granted sometimes. Thank you for presenting to us tonight, you know, where you're going, not only where you've been, but where you're going. I love the Williamsburg campus, I love the fact that you're reaching out, but as long as you keep that, that improving the, the workforce in this region, you'll always be a success. So thank you for what you do. We're, I understand why you're so proud of it. So great job, and great job to your staff. Look forward to the buildings in twenty-twenty. You know, if Randy said that, I'd mark it down on my calendar, so I just...
Again, I'd just like to say, we do it because we have your support. And we're always listening and trying to respond to our community needs. That's what makes us a community college.
Well, thank you, Dr. Devlin. Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right. And we'll move to regular session.